I'm having a gavel, but I'm actually, we're just continuing our meeting. We actually have spent the first hour discussing the reaccreditation of the high school that the school committee is involved in, working with the administration. So we spent the first hour discussing what the school committee role will be in that process. So now we'll move to the rest of our agenda. Initially, if there's anybody out there in the public who wishes to be heard on any issue on our agenda tonight, please make yourself known. See anybody? Next, we will move to our student report, and tonight, we have Jacob Mulling.
Zachary.
Zachary, oh, I have to give credit to Jake, but Zach Mulling. Sorry, Zach.
Midterms were last week, and we had half-days Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And today, we started the first day of the third term. Middle school open house was held at the high school two Wednesdays ago, and we had a great turnout. Saturday, the hockey team beat Masco in a close game, 2-1, in Lynnfield-North Reading Wrestling, when they try meet against Beverly and Bill Ricka last Saturday, giving them a 21-0 record. Girls' and boys' basketball, both have games tonight against Ipswich. On Wednesday, girls' and boys' track will be having a dual meet against Hamilton-Wenham in Ipswich. And also this weekend, swimming will be taking part in Cal's. Yesterday, the student council held a polar plunge in Winthrop for the MASC, and on February 5th, the student council will be holding an administration appreciation luncheon during school for faculty, staff, and also they'll be holding a luncheon at the PVD Court for residents for their tolerance of the construction that's going on right outside their doors. On February 11th, the Red Cross will be holding a blood drive at the high school during school hours for faculty and students to take part in. Today, the mock trial traveled on a field trip, and this Thursday, the Model United Nations will be traveling into Boston to take part in the Harvard Model UN until Sunday. And finally, Friday at 7:30, the high school musical Xanadu will open, maybe the last musical the high school put on in Daniel A. Shea Auditorium. And my student work is from Spanish IV. It was a group project, helping us learn the meanings of the different prepositions and how they were used. We made kind of like profiles with them.
Did you say we're at, did you say the third quarter today?
Yep.
The school year's going by fast. Any other questions or comments from Zach? Are you, just curious, do you participate in any sports this?
Not this, but I'm in the Model UN, probably going to Boston.
Oh, you're not participating in that? That's a great program.
What's a sport?
What, Marley-Wen?
Is that your first time to Marley-Wen?
Yeah, it's my first time.
And that's organized by Harvard, right? Is Harvard involved in that?
Yeah, Thursday to Sunday. Schools from all around the world will be participating.
Were you assigned a country yet?
Yes, we're Uzbekistan.
Uzbekistan?
Yeah.
Anything else? Great, good job. Thanks. Okay, next, we're going to move to the middle school presentation. This is our third school, I believe, on our five-school tour this year. And we're back at our old home base. This used to be home field for the school committee, but now we're stationed at town hall until the new high school opens, and we'll be moving into the distance learning lab at the new high school. So at this time, I'll call up Principal O'Connell.
We're going to call up Kayden Smith.
Okay.
Good evening to Lieutenant Willis and school committee members. Today is Monday, January 27th, and is day five on our occasion. This is...
Sarah Boston.
Andrew Semmi.
And Kayden Smith. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. Student notices for today. Book club will be meeting on Wednesday this week.
Due to the half-day on Thursday, video club will not be meeting this week. Scoliosis screening will take place this week in PE classes. Emergencies only to the nurses' office. No art club today. There is no talent show practice today. There will be a mandatory talent show practice on Wednesday. Newspaper club will meet on Tuesday until 3:30 PM. Lunch cleanup this month. Sixth grade, Mrs. Meyer; seventh grade, Mr. Petrie-Wasser; and eighth grade, Mrs. Loughley. The nurses' office will be closed for lunch every day from 11:09 AM to 11:34 AM. Please do not send students to the nurses' office during those times. And now for a guest speaker.
Good morning, everyone, or good evening, everyone. This is Owen DeKleen with a new weekly puzzler. I am tied up at least once a day and forced to carry ten nails. I work diligently without pay and follow your many trails. I do not smell very well, but at least I have many eyes. I have two tongues but never yell, and I'll bet you know my size. What am I? If you think you know the answer, write it on an index card along with your name and turn into the green box right here at a convenient time. Good luck.
Now for a Wonder Book update from Sarah Boston.
Hello, I will be speaking about the Wonder Book Initiative here at the middle school. On Friday, December 13th, the North Reading Middle School began a school-wide book club. Students, teachers, and staff are reading the book Wonder together. Wonder, a young adult fictional novel, was written by R.J. Palacio. For the rest of the school year, we'll be reading Wonder as a school community. About once every month, homerooms will be extended, and everyone will read Wonder and then discuss relevant topics and questions. The discussion questions talk about friendship, triumphing over obstacles, betrayal, and bullying. Many of these questions are posted to the North Reading Middle School website. If you would like to join our book club, feel free to borrow or buy a copy of Wonder and read along with us. In Wonder, ten-year-old August Pullman has a severely deformed face due to a rare genetic syndrome called Treacher Collins. The year August starts fifth grade, his parents decide to enroll him in a public school for the first time. Wonder tells a story of August's first year of real schooling and the story of his older sister's Viya's first year of high school. When we finish reading Wonder, we will have a celebration. I hope many people who read Wonder this year will be inspired by the amazing story and the powerful messages that it holds. Thank you. Next is Jordan Lovett and her paper bag project.
Hi, I'm Jordan Lovett, and from Paper Bag Book Report, I read Between the Lines by Joseph E. Holt and Samantha Van Leeuwen. And on the front, we had drawn an original scene from our story. And on the back, we had to draw, we had to write about our characters, main characters, and explain what they did in the story, and the settings, the major conflicts, and why they were important to the story, and the resolution. And the main characters were Delilah and Oliver. And Oliver was a character in Delilah's favorite storybook. And once, when Delilah was reading the storybook, Oliver spoke out loud to her. And ever since then, in the story, they've been trying to get him out of the books so they could meet in person. And in the bag, you were supposed to put four objects that were important to the story. I had a dress, a magic wand, a picture of Minecraft, and a bracelet. And the picture of Minecraft symbolized when Delilah visited the author of the storybook's house, she met the son of the author, and he played a game like Minecraft. And on that computer that he played the game on was the same computer she used to write the story. So she used the same computer to rewrite the story so she could meet Oliver, and he did end up getting out of the book. The other paper bags you see on the desks were other paper bags from other students and other classes, and you can look at them if you need to.
Now for Caitlin Galvin, showing her active reading project.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Galvin. I'm an eighth grader, and I'm here to explain my ELOI project. Once a term we complete an active reading project, first we select to read a novel and fill out a packet that contains information that includes every topic and every element of the book, like the theme, the conflict, and the characters. There are pages for us to explain our favorite quotes and what they meant to us. Then we were required to make a visual to represent the book. Visual for term one centered around one word. The word we used represented the novel and its main theme. This term, we focused on a character, and the main visual is an illustration of the character, surrounding it is information about the character's personality traits, physical characteristics, relationships, and other facts. For my project, I read the novel Johnny Tremaine by Esther Forbes. It is centered on a fourteen-year-old boy named Johnny, who's growing up in colonial Boston during the beginning of the American Revolution. When the story begins, Johnny Tremaine is an apprentice in a silversmith shop. His mother died when he was young, and he's taken in as an apprentice. He's a bit self-centered, and bosses are on the older apprentices in the shop. Then he's injured in an accident while working, and his hand becomes disfigured, ruining his future as a silversmith. As he's suddenly thrown into the hunt for a new job, he must learn to overcome his disability and morph into a different person. During his journey, he interacts with figures of the American Revolution, including the Sons of Liberty, and he learns about the true cause, which he was never really exposed to before. Throughout the story, he meets these figures and molds his new life after them. His friend Rab and others who inspire him to fight for the revolution. He meets characters like Dr. Joseph Warren, Paul Revere, and Samuel Adams, participates in events such as the Boston Tea Party. Johnny helps to form the thirteen colonies into the United States of America, and changes from a selfish boy into a patriotic man in the process. Johnny Tremaine is a fantastic story about the American Revolution, told from the eyes of a boy closer to a regular student's age, and I really enjoy reading it and playing it in the project.
I always pick up that myself, so I don't spill soda on my hands.
Hi, my name is Meg Candy, and I'm part of the app club here at the middle school, along with a couple of my friends, Eric, Tyler, Dan, and Sam. Together, we have created an app called Backpack. So if you turn on your tablets aside, you can see the app there.
How to turn them on? Can you just see?
It's on the side.
Show them how to turn the tablets on, Sam, please.
Where's the app? Is it back here?
There are two.
That one doesn't work. That one doesn't work.
We're going to have to share.
Oh, just swipe to unlock it. There you go. So this app is designed to help students with their school needs and organize them. So there's six sections to this app. Study tools, which includes a website that we included called Quizlet. There's homework, where students can enter their teacher's homework websites, so whenever they go to the app, it'll be there, and they can just click on the link and take them to the website. There's notes, which includes three note-taking softwares. One's Google Drive, one's Evernote, and one's Backpack Notes. Backpack Notes is a note-taking software that we have created, where students can take notes and save them and load their old ones. The next section is a schedule. The schedule, students can make a calendar for their week or month, so they can organize their whole schedule. The next section is the teachers, where they can enter their teacher's website, so they can access it from the app. The next section is the grades, where they can access their EdLine grades. So straight from the app, they can check what their grades are in all the subjects. However, if some other students don't use EdLine, they can enter another website besides EdLine. The last section of the app is the extra section. With the extra section, you can draw and do whatever you want. It's just a fun place. Together, all of these sections help organize a student and help them at school. And a special note to the committee for helping us get Chromebooks, which are helping us a lot these days.
Meg, explain to them that you made the app. You created the app. We're trying to show you the code behind a lot of what Meg explained. I'm not sure they understood, Meg. Tell them that you created that. Tell them for what.
So behind all this app, there's coding and stuff, which we used on the AppInventor software.
Oh, MIT's?
Yeah, it's made by MIT. So...
What language is it?
It's click and drag.
So click and drag, it's no, you don't have to write it? It's just programming?
Yeah. So... So eventually, when you put everything together, it creates this app, and we submitted this app into the Verizon App Challenge, and we didn't win, but it came out to be really good. Yeah, it came a lot better than we anticipated, so...
Can any student at the school use this?
Yes. Well, it only works on Android phones and tablets, but once they download it, they can use it whenever they want to.
More importantly, what's your business model? What's your break-even point here? Have you thought of, is this something you've thought of as a possible career? Programming, software development?
Hopefully.
Come find me in ten years.
Good job.
I do have a question about this. If I wanted to find this online, where would I go?
Well, we haven't put it on the actual Google Play yet, but we can send you the link, and you can download it, but we haven't put it on the actual Google Play.
Happy I want the link. I will send it. They had some other neat... Sam, tell them about yours briefly. Sam's app, I liked it just as much.
I had also made an app that didn't get entered because at last minute, we realized that teams had to be more than we anticipated. And my app basically was called, it allowed people to remember a location using their Android phone and go somewhere such as a concert or another event. And when they leave, to press a remember button, and it will take, and through Google Maps, it will take them back to their car.
That is unbelievable. We need that app now, Sam. I'm nearing sixty, Sam. I could use that for every aspect of my life.
Sorry, I forgot one more thing. And Ms. Dasho, our robotics and computers teacher, helped us a lot with this. She's the one that started it off for us, and if she wasn't here, we wouldn't even have anything here, so...
And now for Noel Riley, speaking about Project 351.
Good evening. My name is Noel Riley. Last Saturday, I had the great privilege of attending the launch day of a program called Project 351. Project 351 is a service project that involves one eighth-grade ambassador from every city and town in Massachusetts. It was founded by Governor DeBala Patrick. We met at Daniel Hall in Boston. Every ambassador was on a team named after various world community leaders, such as Malala, the girl from Pakistan, Nelson Mandela, Martha Teresa, and the team that I was on, Team Bono. After an informational conversation with all the ambassadors, the governor, and guest speakers, we were disembarked to all seven service sites, such as the Pine Street Inn, the Greater Boston Food Bank, and Cratos de Cryons. I went to Orchard Gardens Boys and Girls Club in Dorchester. The experience was so amazing because we got to help so many people. We helped run a winter carnival for the kids and organized various hiking kits for families. I met so many people and learned so many things about leadership and community, and how helping those who are less fortunate can change their lives so much. Using the motto of Project 351, unite, act, lead, remember to help when you can, and you might be surprised how much fun it can be and how we will help in the process.
And now a choral presentation led by Carla Lister.
I just need this one. Yeah.
And there we go. Where are we going? Where are we going? Wait, wait, you're fine. Just stand right where you are. Right in the center of all of it, that's cool. Right there, right there. You feel like a family. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I believe you all know, I'm Mrs. Lister, Carla Lister, the middle school chorus director. This is our, part of our eighth-grade chorus that's here for you tonight. I'm extremely lucky to also be joined by a few of our sixth and seventh graders that are waiting out in the hallway to join us for our last song. But this group, I'm really trying to figure out how to fail them within the next quarter so that they don't get to go up to the high school. I had the privilege of teaching a lot of these students at The Batch when I was the elementary music teacher there, and they are an incredible group of young women and young men, so I'm excited at the fact that I get to show them off tonight. So the first song they're going to perform is called "Ala Nanita Nana." It's a little Spanish lullaby for you. You guys ready? You warmed up, right? All right, stand up straight. You're good. Before we sing, I really need to introduce Ms. Emily Neering, who is our guest pianist and one of our chorus students also, who will be helping us out tonight. Thank you, Emily. And Ms. Janet Harrison, who is our accompanist all the time and donates her time to our school, The Batch, The Little, and The Hood, and plays for us. So she's amazing.
And I'm an alumni. I went to this school.
Ladies and gentlemen.
So the last song we're going to perform for you tonight, "Give Us Hope." Two weekends ago, I had the privilege of taking sixteen of our students to the MMEA Junior District Festival, which they had their auditions up here in Methuen, and we had seven of the sixteen that made it, but I have a lot of you here today. Can you raise your hand if you went and auditioned, please? Districts was extremely hard this year, and our group did an amazing, amazing job. I am so proud of each and every one of them. They came in before school, after school, during lunches, took music home, and worked on all of their stuff on their own with me, and they just did a fabulous job. They did a fabulous job, so thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for putting in the extra time. Are you ready to rock it up?
Can you see? Look in my eyes. Can you feel? My hand is reaching. Give us hope and we'll show you the way. Take my hand, now look in my eyes. Tell me what you see. Give us hope, my voice is calling. Can you see? Look in my eyes. Can you feel? My hand is reaching. Give us hope and we'll show you the way. Give us hope, my voice is calling. Can you see? Look in my eyes. Can you feel? My hand is reaching. Give us hope and we'll show you the way. Show you the way. My voice is calling. Show you the way. My voice is calling. Show you the way.
I would like to thank Superintendent Willis and the school committee for joining us tonight.
Can we ask questions?
Of course.
One of the things that interested me was the discussion of lunch cleanup. So what exactly does that entail? I'm seriously interested. Does everybody end up doing lunch cleanup during the school year? What does that entail?
Every month, we have a sixth and seventh and eighth grade homeroom class that will do lunch cleanup, and that rotates out every single month. And at the end of the school year, actually, every single homeroom has participated in this lunch cleanup, which helps participate in the effort of making our school a better place inside the lunchroom and outside, because it shows that everyone can participate some way or another.
That's awesome.
There are various dust bins and brooms that the students can use, and we also try to pick up any trash you see around the lunchroom. And last year, we wiped down the tables too, but we're not doing that this year.
That's great. So you must have a good union, so. That's excellent. You no longer have the table wiping down drop. That's great. Now, does this help? Because I know that we don't have a lot of time between lunches, so I'm assuming that helps get the students in and out.
Yeah.
That's great. Anyone else have any questions?
I want to know if they're excited about the school.
Oh, that's a good question. Right.
The New School Club has actually done a lot of interviews with Ms. Willis, and they've been actually really interesting and really informal, so I'd like to thank you for that.
You're welcome. Let's do more.
Are you looking forward to going into the new school? Have you seen, probably none of you have gotten a tour, but I can tell you that it's just unbelievable. And believe it or not, it's probably going to be easier for you to find your way around that school than this school, because it's basically one giant street, main street, that connects everything. It's like you really can't get lost. I probably could, but you won't. Yeah, I'll have the app. Yeah, it's going to be great. Any other questions?
I love doing this every year, and I love the format.
I like what a lot of our, almost all of our schools are doing now, is having the students, even at the lowest grades, take the lead in the presentations. Of course, for the really young kids, the principals have to play a little more active role. But it's always good, when we conceived this idea, I think it was five or six years ago, it was so we could see what our students were doing. And initially, the principals would come in and say, here's what they're doing. And we were like, that's not really what we want to see. You know, we want to see more what the kids are doing and have them tell us in their own words. So you've done a great job of that tonight. The other question I have is, what is the artwork that's up around here? Is anybody?
Ms. O'Brien was actually out today, and that's rare, but she nicely made sure that these were displayed. Did any of you have art in first or second quarter that participated in that project? Jordan, be brave. You can explain.
So what we did was you pick a girl or boy to draw. It had to be a celebrity. And then you cut it in half, either side, and then you could draw the other half. And we had some assistance from Ms. O'Brien, but other than that, we were on our own. And we had to work on for girls. It was hard for makeup, because the eyes are a lot bigger, because that's what they're used for. So, and the color is a little easier than the black and white, because you can see the different values, but it was a lot of fun.
So one side is a picture, and the other side is what you drew?
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. I can't believe someone, that's really Peyton Manning in there, isn't it?
Good job, Jordan. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Once again, another great, another great performance by middle school.
If anybody would like to submit an answer to this.
I need something to hide my answer.
Do you need to write your name on it?
I put my name on it. I'm just going to put that I'm SC chairman. I'll give you my address so you can mail the prize.
If you win, you can use your gold card and see lunch cleanup firsthand.
Ooh, maybe I can help. I can kiss me. Is that it? Anybody else want to submit?
I'm going one.
Alright, so are you going to get to answer tonight?
Yes, you will. No, you cannot submit.
Wait, we submit tomorrow?
That was last week's.
Two weeks ago.
As you may recall, this week's puzzler was, "I am tied up at least once a day and forced to carry ten nails. I work diligently without pay and follow your many trails. I do not smell very well, but at least I have many eyes. I have two tongues but never yell, and I'll bet you know my size. What am I?" The answer was, a pair of shoes. And this week's winner is... Winner is SC chairman.
I need reinforcement for everything I did. I really appreciate that. That was fun. Great job, everybody.
Thanks.
Thanks for the fun.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
That was great. We only have two schools left.
I know. I'm talking about tonight.
Oh, you need the, there was another one charging. Do you need that one?
We never, that one didn't.
You want it?
Well, it works, but for some reason, it didn't.
This was fun.
Yeah.
Nice app.
Shame some of my developers, actually. Quite. That's why I want to show it to them.
We'll get everything else tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
You have exactly forty-five minutes to accomplish this meeting.
I think next, we're going to bring up Mr. Norton. Want to come up? John Norton from the RMLD Board of Directors is going to talk to us about the RMLD rate increase, which has been discussed, I think, a couple of times by the selectmen. And, John, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To go back a little bit in time, the beginning of December, this was presented to us for the first time. It was presented to both the Citizens Advisory Board, which I sit on, and the Board of Light Commissioners. It kind of took us all by surprise, and initially, they wanted this rate increase to be pushed through at that point in time. There was fairly good protests from both our board and some of the other members, so it slowed it down a little bit. The Board of Light Commissioners is actually going to take a final vote on this on Wednesday night. The board that I serve on met last Thursday. We voted three to two to not have a rate increase this year. While it's understandable, and part of the problem is, the last rate increase that we had was three and a half years ago. Subsequently, there has been nothing since then. If you look at one of the pages in the package that I prepared, that shows, actually, this graph. What has happened here is, we're kind of a victim of our own success in that about a year and a half, two years ago, we started an aggressive energy conservation program. We started primarily with the commercial through the schools and then to residential. A lot of people have taken advantage of it. Our sales growth is basically flat, has been flat for about a year or so. This problem really should have been caught probably about a year and a half ago, but we had a lot of circumstances where we had a former general manager retired two years ago. There was a whole series, and I won't go into a lot of detail here, but there was a whole series of missteps on this situation. We ended up with an interim general manager for almost a year, and he had a full plate, more than a full plate. So what happened was, this whole issue never really got addressed until now.
They're actually selling, they sold less electricity in 2013 than they did in 2008.
That's right. That's correct.
You know, you would think that that would never happen, but with all the energy conservation issues. If you also look, the amount of, that they're selling to, I think municipal buildings has actually decreased significantly.
That's correct.
It was a lot bigger in 2006 than it is now. And again, that's all the energy conservation efforts that have gone into new buildings and retrofitting old buildings.
That's correct. A new general manager that took over in July started to realize there was a problem. And again, she was placed in an unfortunate situation because she really didn't have any prior knowledge of this happening. And so she has tried to come up with a solution. Unfortunately, the end result of this was that we didn't want it to happen during the holidays. It's kind of a catch-22 situation. One of the drivers of this, and this is why, one of the reasons why the CAB has been opposed to this, the managers and administrators of the four towns and the respective boards of selectmen, oh, I can't answer for Reading. Three of the four towns are adamantly opposed to this and have registered formal complaints in writing through the respective representatives of each community. One of the drivers in this, and it goes back to the twenty-year agreement under which the CAB was formed. There's a formula in there that provides for payment in lieu of taxes each year by the Reading Light Department to the four communities that it serves. And it's based on a percentage formula. It's based on the size of the community. And what happened in 1998, the Board of Light Commissioners at that time also voted to make a separate payment to the town of Reading, because the town of Reading is actually the owner of the light department, even though it's a separate entity under its own, as far as the governance of it. But any bonding or anything else that has to go out, goes out through the town of Reading.
So they get two payments?
They get two payments. The payment that's currently due, or I think may have just been paid, was a million, looks a little over a million dollars. That's one of the drivers of this, and it's a sticking point right now, because what the municipalities are saying is, you should have held, or you should hold off on that until we can get this problem under control. Right now, we do have a cost of study survey that is in the works. It's being done by a professional outfit. That's one of the biggest drivers. There are a couple of others. Gas prices have gone up to the power plants that we buy power from, and we buy from quite a few. We have spread out our portfolio. But again, my thrust on this was last week. While we are concerned about the ratepayers, there's also another factor here, because one of the categories is schools municipal. And it was a category that started probably five or six years ago. I was one of the biggest drivers of it. It gives the schools and municipal side somewhat of a break, because originally you were under the classification of commercial. My point that I made last Thursday was that, in fairness, because it's going to be a fair and equitable solution to this to both the ratepayers and the taxpayers, when you look at what can happen, and again, of course, now we're down to five months left in this fiscal year. But if you look at what can happen to the municipal side of this equation, in some of the, in some of the communities, it can be devastating. And as I explained to Michael earlier before the meeting started, the other part of this, this rate increase goes through this year, there's already a proposal to come back in the next fiscal year with a three and a half to four percent rate increase on top of this. So I just want to make, I just want to make the school committee aware, the administration aware, because it's something that if it takes effect, it can impact the remaining five months of this year. All of the, all of the schools all have a built-in budget already. Anything additional now is going to impact the budgets. And, you know, again, I want to make the school committee aware that there probably is another three and a half to four percent coming next fiscal year, so you can begin to look at how you put your budget together in your utility section.
So what are, for this, if it's approved for the remaining five months of this year, one, it won't be retroactive, correct?
That is correct. It'll start with a February billing.
Okay. Second is, what is the rate they're looking at? I've heard nine, I've heard five. I'm just trying to understand.
Overall, it's nine. Well, let me back that up. Overall, it's five. Okay. There's several classifications in our rates. It's kind of hard to explain to the layman, so to speak, but if you factor some of, some of those categories in our rate sheet, there's some areas where it'll be five, there's some areas where it'll be nine.
You know what it would be for the, would it be nine for the school buildings? It would be five.
Five.
And then you're saying next year... And then you're saying next year?
Another three and a half to four percent.
And that would be at the beginning of the year that you want to implement that?
That's correct. That will go into effect the beginning of next fiscal year.
Are they voting on that tomorrow night also?
No.
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 So that would put us, that would be like a nine, it would be more than nine percent, because it's five percent of the existing rates and three and a half on a higher rate. So, yeah.
Segue right into our usage to.
Right. Right usage to our.
Well, that's my other concern, and it's also the concern of the town of Wilmington because of the large school projects that are going on. I'm not too sure how the spread is with Wilmington as far as their utility use, but it's my understanding here that you're going to be more dependent on electricity, electrical use than you are gas or any of the other utilities.
It's not electric heat or cooling, but it's a system that's driven by electricity.
That's correct.
To move the air to the buildings, chillers, et cetera, so, the pumps and everything. So, yeah, so that, I mean, obviously, it's a concern when you're bringing a, being a project online and you're facing a pretty, you're looking probably at about a 10% increase if they, if they implement both of these.
Yeah, so I had conversations with the new general manager on Friday and followed up with her again today, and she's actually going to be sending me some data that can help us do some further analysis by the end of this week. But I looked at, you know, what a 9% increase, you know, flat increase would do for next year on a status quo basis. Actually, I have a chart here, everyone's sitting and looking at it. So, so again, so if you look at what, you know, a 9%, now again, you know, it's going to be five this year, if it doesn't go into effect February 1st and then compounds, you know, these numbers may change a little bit. But just kind of looking at, you know, what our average kilowatt usage has been, what our average price has been. Now, as John explained, it's not as an easy, straightforward calculation as you would think, because there's so many different charges. There's a flat, you know, customer charge, and then there's the energy charge, and then the thing that's the biggest variable in this is that demand charge, and there's all these, you know, different things you can do to try to eliminate that demand charge. So some of these numbers will change, again, with the operation of the new high school, that shift. But we've looked at sort of the average of what we're doing per kilowatt hour on the annual basis, what we're currently paying. When you average out all the four or five different charges that go into what we pay, that's what, you know, I tried to do by analyzing our bills. So a 9% rate increase, you know, all staying the same this year, we're looking at about a little over approximately a $20,000 cost impact.
So, Michael, what you're saying is, the average, when you take all the different rates we're paying?
Yeah.
1,928,128 kilowatt hours, basically?
That's our usage.
Right.
And then the average price is, when you look at all the different, you know, the base charge, the flat fixed charge, custom charge, energy charge, demand charge, try to pull it all together, and you kind of look at what, you know, they fluctuate each month, they fluctuate by location, too.
But if you actually, so for fiscal '14, though, you estimated 1,920,000 hours.
That's the estimated kilowatt.
And wouldn't that put, wouldn't it be even higher than that in fiscal '15?
Yeah, so we're going to be higher.
So this 247087 is probably lower than, it's probably going to be higher than that?
It's probably going to be higher. So if you look at, you have to, if you look at the impact of the high school coming online next year, that shift to electricity, you know, that, that average, we're going to be higher than what we've averaged.
I mean, we could be looking at a $25,000 to $30,000 impact.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair to say. So that would, I would have to do that further analysis on that, the shift. This is kind of a status quo.
And this year, I mean, five months, we could probably get through that. It won't be as significant, right?
Yeah, I quickly, just based on this, it's about, you know, eight thousand, a little over eight thousand.
That's still not easy, I bet.
So we, you know, we could absorb that.
Next year.
Next year, with the two play, you know, the two issues at play, the rate increase, potential compounding of that increase, plus the shift to a higher electricity usage bill, you know, kilowatts, you may see this average of, you know, 1.9 million, you know, go up. The second page is just a quick analysis of, we have been, through the use of certainly Wayne's efforts, working with the towns' efforts, we have been, you know, implementing some, you know, cost savings, you know, conservation efforts, you know, retrofitting lighting and changing out gym lighting to get more efficient lighting. So we have been saving, and our overall kilowatts, kilowatts on annual basis, you can see that line chart over the last five, six years, has been trending down, so that, that's been helpful.
Kathy, do you have any thoughts to share? That you'd want to share?
No increase. It's something that anyone looks forward to as we're trying to finish out one school year and plan for the next school year. I'll be very interested in getting some hard and fast numbers as we see what takes place at RMLD over the next week or so. And then we're going to need to factor that into the entire planning process as we put together FY15's budget.
Any questions or comments?
John, I really appreciate John preparing this talk and the tissues. I really didn't understand it until I started to read it, so I really appreciate the background.
I mean, I understand they need to raise rates. It would have been nice if it was in a more orderly fashion than hitting you in the middle of the rate year, especially for commercial or municipals that have budgets already planned out, you know?
Everybody has a budget planned out.
Right, everybody has a budget planned out, so.
So the selectmen are looking at this tomorrow?
No, the boards, the.
Board of Light Commissioners. RMLD is voting tomorrow night. One thing I did suggest, and I gave Mike the fax number to the RMLD, if you folks so choose to do it, would be to draft a letter and fax it to the RMLD prior to Wednesday, so that it's just another entity voicing concern about this rate increase. Hopefully, the Board of Light Commissioners might take that under advisement.
Is the consensus to authorize superintendent of business, the director of finance and operations to do that, that are going to send it to the RMLD prior to Wednesday?
Oh, we're not going to shut our lights off.
No, 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 no. No.
There are additional needs.
Yeah.
No. A question may ask, Mr. Norton, a question.
Sure.
Did the Board of Selectmen write a letter and submit that to RMLD as well for the town of Reading?
That I do not, our Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
I have to say, probably not. I carried their concerns forward as the representative last Thursday night. I do know, however, the Wilmington town manager and Board of Selectmen, the town manager for Linfield and their Board of Selectmen.
That was a pretty strong letter.
Did write, yeah, did write formal letters of concern and protest. In fact, Bill Gustus, the town manager in Linfield cites in a paragraph their concern about that one point something million.
Right.
Second payment to the town of Reading at this point in time, knowing the situation that we're in.
It seems like if you're making a payment in lieu of taxes, that should be applicable. Look at the rates and everything else.
Well, this is their second payment, and the way I read this, it says that they don't get that second payment unless there's a surplus, right?
Right. So they're creating.
They're creating a surplus by raising the rates.
A surplus to make the payment.
Right.
And the payment in lieu of taxes is a, I don't want to say it's a voluntary thing.
It seems backwards to me.
But, yeah.
Oh, isn't it backwards if you're in Reading?
Right, if you're in Reading, it's not backwards, I guess, right? I understand that, yeah.
No comment.
It's more.
So Kathy, can you and Michael take a look at putting something together tomorrow and faxing it to RMLD?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Will you coordinate with, like, talk to Greg?
Yeah, see if, yeah, check with Greg, that's a good idea, Karen, see if they've done anything.
I'm sure they've talked about it.
Yeah, they, John actually presented at the selectmen's meeting about a month ago, right?
That's correct. And that's when it first, you know, the area town representatives went to their respective boards and made presentations. Again, my concern, I probably, I'm probably the only one of the members that went before the school committee, but I felt it was important to bring you folks up to date.
Yeah.
Especially in light of this coming forward in the middle of a fiscal year and what you could be facing for the next fiscal year.
Correct.
Because more than likely, that rate increase is going to be coming in the pipeline, too.
Okay. We appreciate it, John. Any other questions? Thanks for putting, thanks for putting this together, and thanks for keeping us informed. And let us, let the administration know what happens with the votes and.
I will.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, then. Okay. Next on the agenda, we'll go back to continued business, and that's, we have the MSBA, SSBC update, also known as the new school update. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last Secondary School Building Committee meeting was held on January 14, beginning at 5:30 PM, and the construction update is as follows. The gymnasium and the cafeteria are defined, and the kitchen equipment will be delivered within the next week or so now, since I wrote this report. The overhead deckwork in the auditorium is near completion, and the catwalk is up, and within the next three to four weeks, the stage lighting and equipment will be up. The control room is also closed in. The administrative offices are taking shape, and the drywall has been completed. All windows are on site, and the high school bridge curtain wall from the academic building through Main Street is going up. In the basement, the boiler room, in the boiler room, the boilers are installed, and one boiler has actually been fired and is now heating Building A. The chillers will be delivered soon for the rooftop on Building B, and electricity will be coming mid-March. And it was mentioned that, they mentioned that working with RMLD has been a real pleasure. So I wanted to make sure that that was said.
Yeah, of course.
Overall, the project is moving forward according to schedule with a nine-day delay in the auditorium. That doesn't mean it's nine days into the school year, it's just a nine-day delay following what we had proposed for an August move-in date. So more effort will be focused on catching this area up to the schedule with a move-in date of August 17. So in terms of the design, the FFNE committee, Furniture, Fixer and Equipment, has worked steadily since last spring to identify furnitures, fixtures and equipment that will go into the new building. Tavoris is the design consultant through our architect, Doran Whittier, and they are finishing up the bid document to be released February 4th, just next week. The MSBA allowed the budget for FFNE for this project to be $1,644,000, based on a $1,200 per pupil cost. The current estimate for FFNE is, the total is based on list prices, and therefore, that final request total is approximately $2,65,715, which works out to be about $1,500 per pupil, per pupil cost. So I would just like to say, as was stated already in the transcript, once the bids are received, you will have a better understanding of what the actual costs will be, and then the FFNE subcommittee will go through the review process to arrive at the budget total that is allowed by MSBA for FFNE on this building project. So more work is to come.
But just to be clear, as we discussed at the SSBC meeting last week, our goal is to bring that cost down to the budget amount.
That is correct.
With that, you know, you, whether choosing some existing furniture from existing, from the current schools, one of the things the architect explained was, you get bids for different, there might be five different companies giving you a bid on a chair, and one chair might be $20 less than the other, but the question is, what's its longevity? What's its durability? What's its quality? And by doing that, we'll get this back into budget, because as the SSBC said, $400,000 is not something that we want to appropriate additionally from the contingency fund for furniture, so.
And this is a typical process.
Right.
So, but it is a process that we're going through with our eyes wide open. The SSBC approved invoices presented by our bonus project manager. The move coordination process has begun with meetings between the principals, Doran Whittier and PMA. It is a lengthy and involved process, especially in a phased project, and as we move through this process, I will continue to record on it at future school committee meetings. I did address the Secondary School Building Committee about the security discussion that took place at a December SSBC meeting, and I, to put it in a nutshell, all future discussions about security for the new school project will take place in executive session as allowed by the open meeting law. And the next regular meeting of the SSBC is scheduled for Tuesday, January 28, beginning at 5:30 PM, and I'm sure that the three members of the school committee that sit on the SSBC can round out this report with their observations of what's taking place on site.
It's awesome.
Well said. Breathtaking.
Breathtaking.
The walls are being, the drywall is going up on the walls, which then gives substance and dimension to the, to all of the spaces, and that, that plus in the academic wing, the ceiling grids are going essentially all in, and the walls are painted, and when you, when you've done that, you are now defining the space very nicely. Still doesn't have the tiles in yet, doesn't have a tile on the floor, but we're getting closer, and it's taking, taking shape in a wonderful way. And all of the spaces along Main Street are now defined with their drywall shapes, and the windows are in for, so that as you walk along Main Street, you look into the media center and into the cafeterias, it's really, really changing day by day, and what you see, some of us have imagined it from the very beginning and could imagine exactly what it was going to look like even, but.
Some of us couldn't.
Definition, some of us haven't been able to imagine it at the beginning. But the spaces are all shaping up very nicely, and it's really wonderful, especially with the glass, if you get there on a sunny day, which we haven't had too many of, but sunny day, some of the spaces are just flooded with light, and they're really very, very much geared toward a good atmosphere to learn in.
Janine?
Not this time.
Jerry?
I think, click the nail on the head, the thing that you see now is that all the spaces are clearly defined, so if you walk in there, and all the subspaces are defined, so if you walk into the auditorium, the chorus space is defined, the band space, the set room, the costume design room, the TV studio, everything is laid out so you can see what it's going to look like. Same thing on the gym side, the gymnasium, the fitness center, the auxiliary gymnasium, now the trainer's office, the athletic director's office, all those things are laid out, the cafeteria, the dining side for the high school, the dining side for the middle school, the kitchen, it's all, everything's distinguished now and laid out. On Saturday, they had a significant crew working in the auditorium, and I think that they're obviously making up time in there, but they had electricians in there, you know, putting in, doing a lot of the wiring. They had crews in there putting those, what do you call, the braces on the walls that they're going to use to put the.
Frames.
The frames on the walls to put the barriers on there, whatever, the sound barriers.
The light, the light shapes.
I spent quite a bit of time with the electrician and the amount of the circuitry and the wiring and the lighting capabilities, and the lighting and the sound, I think, are just going to be overwhelming, and it's amazing, it really is. So it's, the amount of work that takes place from one week to the next is extraordinary. But I think that's happening now because they're starting to get towards the finish work, and that's why you can see so much progress from going there.
And while it's still early, the public will have plenty of time to view this project once it's complete, signed off, ready to be viewed, we'll have dates and times for the open houses and tours and all that kind of stuff, because the community paid for it, so the community should have every opportunity it can to come in and see what their dollars are paying for.
They own it.
They own it, exactly. And it's, it'll be a great project. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, next, we have proposals for the school calendar for 2014 and '15. Okay, next, we have a proposal for the school calendar for 2014 and '15.
Yes, at the last school committee meeting, we had a discussion about a draft calendar that was presented to the school committee. And based on those discussions, what you have in front of you this evening is a second draft of the calendar. I took back the recommendations from the school committee to the Administrative Council for their review and discussion. And we really took a look at and weighed the pros and cons of a recommended start date that is the week after the Labor Day holiday. And there were absolutely no reasons presented to prohibit us from starting school on the 8th. Everyone said that it was doable, we could make it happen, we could make it work. So that's the Monday after the Labor Day weekend.
And you discuss this with the administrations, the administrators and everybody else?
All of the principals and central office administrators at one of our Administrative Council meetings.
And just to refresh everybody, you know, one of the reasons, the initial date proposed by the superintendent was the 4th, Thursday, the 4th. And everybody except me was fine with that. I thought that, I didn't like starting on a Thursday, but then we started getting some discussion as to giving us maybe a little wiggle room, given that we're bringing in a new high school online, it might make sense to give us a couple extra days in case we need, who knows what we need in those last few days. And we also discussed some ideas about bringing students in early, giving tours, some community service by having students, maybe from the student council and other student groups, could give the tours, they could be trained to give the tours. And a lot of good ideas came up to use that Thursday and Friday of the week prior to get everybody comfortable with this new facility. So it does move our finish date, our end date back to the 26th of June, but that's with the five snow days. And I know that next year, we're not going to have any snow days at all. So without any snow days, we're beginning out on the 19th of June.
That's correct.
So it's really only, it's only a two-day difference. It puts you into the next week, but it's only a two-day difference.
And actually, this year, the last day is scheduled to be the 25th if we use all five snow days.
Right.
So this is a one-day difference with, if we used all five days, we still have two days in addition to those five, should it be an extraordinarily snowy winter, which it won't be.
Right.
But it gives us seven days. And I told the Administrative Council that that was my concern initially. I was concerned about snow, but they smartly said the same thing that you said to me. When was the last time we needed seven snow days?
Yeah.
And we haven't.
No.
So it's not a founding fear.
Right.
But that being said, we talked about the first day for preschool and the first day for kindergarten, and the elementary principals saw no issue with moving it back to the following week. So as a result, students would start on Monday, September 8th. And as you had mentioned, the 185th day, that includes five snow days, would be Friday, June 26th. We would welcome back our faculty and educators on the Friday, September 5th. The first professional development day would be Thursday, September 4th. So that's nice that that takes place prior to students coming back. And then the second full professional development day would take place on Friday, October 10th. So we also talked about using that Tuesday after Labor Day and the Wednesday for making sure that our students know exactly where to go, so providing some orientation for them. Middle school students would be oriented by current high school students to the old high school.
Yep.
And then new high school students would be oriented to the new high school by students that we trained prior to those days.
And Ms. O'Connell and Mr. Bernard are on board with that?
They are on board. We still have the details to work out, but we talked about it in concept. And everyone said it seems to make sense. And they thanked you because we didn't even think we had an opportunity to consider bringing students back the next week.
Well, that's what we're here for.
They thanked you for wisely recommending that change.
Just curious.
They're always buttering our bread. Why is that?
I don't know. I wonder why, huh? Did you get any calls from any parents at all, any parents on the calendar? Just curious.
No, I did not.
You did not? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I received an email, I'm sorry, from one parent who was watching the school committee meeting, and she supported bringing the students back on the 8th.
I just think it gives us, I mean, everything, everything's probably going to be buttoned down at the new building.
Oh, I like it.
But I think giving us a few extra days and giving us more time to get the kids in there, to get them comfortable, both, as you said, the middle schoolers who are moving down to the old high school and the high school kids moving to the new high school, I think those two extra days can be quite valuable for us.
But you're going to have three grades going into the, to the high school from the middle school, but, you know, all have to be orientated, I mean, as opposed to just one grade coming into the middle school. And then you have literally four grades going into the high school.
That all have to be.
That are all going to have to be, you know.
Right.
So can I make a motion now?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the school calendar for the 2014-'15 year.
Motion by Ms. Araketti, second by Ms. Vowles. Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Posed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, recap the presentation. We have the rating, creature view, youth rating, high school overnight, baseball team trip requests.
Yes. Coach Frank Carey is requesting approval for the varsity baseball team to stay overnight in South Yarmouth to participate in the Ebbett Memorial Invitational from Friday, March 28th, 2014, to Saturday, March 29th. It's just in one overnight. The team has participated in this trip for over the last 25 years. There is a letter in your packet that was submitted regarding this trip, and the school committee has supported this trip in the past. And so they are asking that you continue to support the baseball team moving, I mean, taking a trip to Yarmouth.
Any questions on that? We've approved it every year that I've been on the board, so.
No questions?
Okay. Motion by Ms. Vowles, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ambiano. Further discussion? Very none, all in favor? Aye. Posed unanimously.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I thought Jerry showed.
Huh? No, 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 don't say that.
You're going to trouble with Frank. Okay, next, we have minutes from the December 9th meeting. I read through them. I did find on page two, no, it's really minor, under the MSBA SSBC update, letter C, I think it should say the architect and the OPM. I started doing transcendental meditation when it said, the architect and the OPM. I think that should be OPM. Am I correct there?
You are correct.
It's not the OPM?
Not the OPM.
Okay.
I can't see you meditating. I'm really tired. I just can't do it.
I don't, I don't. You can't see it. Solid motion to approve the minutes as amended, unless anybody has any other issues.
To approve the regular meeting minute of...
Seven I.
Seven I.
Second.
Further discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Posed unanimously.
Um... Well done.
Next, budget update.
So under the budget update this evening, I'd like to request the school committee consider appointing a subcommittee to help the administration review the facility rental schedule. So you may recall, as part of the budget goals this year, with the new building coming online, we felt it was necessary to review our facility rental schedule and the fees that were charged on a per hour basis to outside groups. And some of that work has started. We begin to, have begun to benchmark other communities in the area that have, you know, similar type of buildings, either a new project, new, you know, high school, combined high school, middle school, kind of in the area. We began to put together some data, compile some, some charts on the kind of where we stand to that. Kind of felt before we take a formal recommendation back to the full committee, a subcommittee to help review and go over some of the data would be helpful.
Have we had any, do we know, we have any requests to rent the new auditorium yet? Do you know?
Definitely an interest.
Interest, but no, well, because the...
Well, there's no seats in there.
No, but I'm saying, no, the dance schools like to plan like a year in advance, so that's why I'm wondering, because they'll have, they have their thing on in the summer, so.
But this is something that we would like to address sooner rather than later because of that.
Right, we should have a policy in place.
And so we have the policy subcommittee, communications subcommittee, I wasn't sure if one of those...
I think, I think we could, I think we should have a couple different members if they want to, I think with, working with Michael to do that, if anybody wants to volunteer.
I'm not at any committee, but I can't put an in-person meeting unless it's after 6:30. So that's the problem.
Well, I'm available.
All right, you guys want to do it?
Good.
So we'll have Cliff and Jerry. Just made an ask.
Setting the wedding venue.
Yeah, that's right, wedding.
That media center is great.
I think the media, yeah, the media center is something, the media center and the distance learning room are two areas that we might...
Need to add to this.
Right.
Yeah, so there's some spaces that we don't currently have on our list.
Right.
Have to be added.
And then also the rates.
The rates have to be reviewed, so.
Because not only do we have the main gym, you have the second, the auxiliary gym, which...
Yeah.
I also did want to, I'm not going to go into details, I know Michael has done some work in the past week analyzing the governor's budget. I think we're going to get, are we going to talk about that?
No. Go ahead, I've got it too, but you go ahead.
I think, I think that it looks like we're going to get the minimum amount of increase, $25 per person, per student.
Right.
But Kathy, I do believe, I do believe because they're now going to be including preschool students, previously they didn't. Is that correct? Did I read that in the governor's budget?
Yeah.
So that will also give us more money. But I think the number is...
Inescient.
Not, right.
Small, it's a small amount.
Small.
And I read some analysis by, I think, I don't know if it was Mike Gilbert, no, somebody from, yeah, from MASC.
Glenn Kooten brought in a couple of...
Right. Glenn Kooten, we're so far behind the curve in terms of the increases in Chapter 70 just haven't kept up with the budget request, and we keep falling behind by more every, every year.
We need to put a graph together that shows the gap, the revenue gap over time. I'm sure it's, it's...
Certainly been a challenge, so, you know, they, the idea was when they put, we kept the 70 formula back in 2007 would be reworked, and you could get every district that was even above their target or contributing over that they should, back to, you know, the equitable amount. And that was obviously slowed down because of the digital economy, and it's, the phase in, it's become, a two-year phase in, it's become seven or eight years. So it's, and the governor this year came out a little bit less aggressively than he did a year ago. He's funded that initiative at, you know, half, you know, 50% for last year, he actually came in at 100% initially, and then it got backed, got backed down, and moved through the House and the Senate.
An issue for us is that we do meet our foundation, we do meet our minimum foundation budget, so that actually hurts us in terms of getting additional Chapter 78.
Right.
The other interesting thing was, he did at least, right now, he proposed maintaining level funding for the circuit breaker.
Correct.
Which is good news because it had, it had a significant increase last year, correct?
Yeah, so it was fully funded, you know, for the first time this current fiscal year, you know, pretty close to 75%. So, so that's level funding next year. It's still, you still need to kind of connect with the DESE. It doesn't necessarily automatically mean that that percent's going to be 75% next year. Because what happens is districts are submitting for extraordinary relief currently right now. So those requests are coming into the DESE this month, and it will continue next month, you know, they do in February. So the DESE will need some time in February and March to go through those requests and see if it qualifies, really before they're comfortable, you know, giving a percent for next year. So certainly a good sign that it's level funded, and it's being certainly supportive, supported, but you'll need to kind of, you'll watch that closely.
The interesting thing though is, is you read through this and all the different categories where they're, they're far short of full funding, what they're supposed to be. And I don't, I just, that concept just doesn't make any sense to me, where they've set a number that should be the budget, and then they don't fund it.
Doesn't make any sense at all, does it?
No.
We need funds left over for their fun projects, like, you know, lights on the streets that are in the shape of vintage lamps.
No, I think that, I think that on the pre-K, I think it removes the cap, so we must have been getting some.
We were getting some.
We were getting some, I think, yeah.
But we'll get more.
The cap will get more.
Right.
This thing about innovative school things just grosses me.
I know.
It's like, you can't be innovative unless you have a certain kind of city or town.
The claim is that we're going to put a lot of money behind education. Then when you get down to it, it really isn't very much money on education. It's a lot of words without anything behind them.
So, and then we still have that, I believe we still have that bill that hasn't come up yet for a hearing, which is the bill to study the unfunded mandates. And I know I communicated with Representative Jones, and I think that's going to push it this way through at some point to get a vote, I hope.
I was contacted by Enru for information, and they are also contacting legislators to move that through. And if I may, I'd just like to draw your attention to the lower right-hand box on Day on the Hill. They've released the date. Remember last year, they did not have Day on the Hill?
Oh, right.
So they've reinstated Day on the Hill for next year, or this year, and it will be April 29th. It's a Tuesday.
I'll bid for it.
I do think there was some good news here, and that, if I read this right, they've frozen the tuitions from, out of, out of district placements, correct?
Yeah, that's good.
So that's good.
It is good.
Now, this still has to get through to the House and the Senate, but...
The OSB in October has pledged the 2% amount, you don't expect, but now they've got this and that.
That would be helpful, that would be helpful at a flat.
That would be very helpful.
It would be.
Okay, that's right. Okay, any other questions on the budget update?
I believe they're level funding local aid. There's no increase to local aid.
Yes. And he's also, I did note the governor is also already earmarking money from the slot parlor.
Good luck with that.
I know. Slot parlors aren't even approved yet.
Fiscal year 19 or 20 for that.
No, it's in the budget for next year.
Jerry, we need to...
Yeah. Next, staffing, any staffing?
None at this time.
Bits and donations?
None at this time.
Subcommittee updates. Just a quick update on the athletic subcommittee. Michael presented a draft letter to go out to parents of eighth graders and high school students related to the new fee schedule, the new fee subsidy plan. And we, the committee provides some input. I think Michael's going to revise that and get that out.
He revised it in early February.
Right.
That's good.
We also talked about the fact that the team room adjacent to the turf field probably won't be completed until the summer, so it won't be used for any spring sports this year. They actually pulled away from that project a little bit during the winter months and focusing on getting the main building done, which makes more sense. So that should be available next football season, the way I understand it.
I mean, yeah, we're going to have the high school facilities there anyway, so it's not imperative that that be done.
But from what I understand, they're hoping to finish that late summer. And then the participation continues to increase. I think we have 40 more athletes in the winter program this year than we did last winter. It's a big number. There's like 50 boys playing hockey now, which is outstanding, and the hockey team has only lost one game this year, as we mentioned earlier, which is great.
It over the last two years, our athletic teams, I mean, have done extremely well. You know, in our division, what they identify these divisions by name, but I think it's a Dolphin division.
Yeah.
I think it's quality schools in our category, and last year we were fifth, and this year we're currently fifth as far as most successful teams in those categories, so it's been a good two-year run.
And I believe our next meeting is next...
The athletic subcommittee will meet on February 4th.
Yes.
At 12:30.
Right. So that's it. Policy, Cliff, anything to...
Well, we met last, Tuesday.
January 22nd.
22nd, whenever, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And we went over a couple of items. One of them was the social networking policy. And we, we have a draft in progress on that.
Great.
Probably in the next week. Where we are of the opinion that you and Karen are going to probably have some input to.
Yeah, I'll let Karen have it first and then make a look at it afterwards.
So big of you.
I know you're just dying to eat your hands on that.
I'm really excited, this will be fun.
Yes.
We're basically following the MASC guy.
That makes sense to start on that, you know, for a basis.
Yeah. And then we had, went into the dissemination of, of information through the schools from oh, groups like the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts or whatever, and, and concluded that that really was not something that we could do directly, but came up with a couple of alternatives for dealing with that, working through the parent associations.
So what's the issue that we, we're getting requests now and we don't allow it?
There's a school committee policy that forbids any dissemination of information through the use of students. We, from time to time, do allow some communication to go out, but in the last several years, we've been inundated with requests, right? Private organizations, from nonprofits, to send information home with our students and it's just not appropriate.
Right.
So we established an electronic community bulletin board through our district website. And we post every single request for dissemination that's provided to us electronically on this community bulletin board. So I asked the principals to again, send out a reminder to parents through their next email communication to parents, that this information is available on the community bulletin board and to really check it regularly, because anytime we get a request, that's now where it's going. Sometimes we get a request not to disseminate information, but each school has an area where parents can go and pick up information. So we do approve that organizations make multiple copies and then place them on that table. And should parents go to that table and find something that interests them, they can then take that information with them. But we're trying to really minimize our, our carbon footprint. And the less copying that we do and the more electronics that we use, I think we'll all be better off. It's hard to make that change for some people.
But the other issue is, if you have everybody trying to do this, I mean, there's got to be some, some sort of qualification, you know what I mean? You know, this, this guy starts a new flag football, he wants you to put flyers out. This one's doing a tennis program, they want you to put flyers out and then.
Can't do that.
Right.
And we have lots of wonderful opportunities for our students and a well-rounded student isn't just focused on academics. But we need it to be reasonable about, reasonable about the, the number of requests that were coming through.
Okay, so you're looking at, okay, do you need to do anything further on, anything else?
Um, no, that covered what the discussion was. I personally didn't know because when I used to be the foot school PA, you know, we needed to do something and it would go out via flyers, you know, eventually we cut it down to a half sheet or things of that nature, so I was curious as to how it was handled now. There was someone in the community who had asked, you know, my enrollment's now saying in Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, you know, is there a way that we can have something go home, you know, through the school? And because I didn't know how it worked anymore, because it did go down the paper, you know, like I'm talking five or so years ago. So that's why I questioned what the policy was.
Well, I think it's a good policy to look at and see if we can.
We did.
Change it. Okay, great. Great, anything else? Okay, we have athletic subcommittee, as Kathy mentioned, is next Tuesday, planning as planning team is next Friday, and the policy subcommittee on February 26th. Do we have anything for the administrative report?
None.
And correspondence?
None at this time.
No? Okay, our next meeting is Monday, February 10th, then Monday, the 24th, and then Monday, March 10th, all at Tom Hall. Any other issues tonight?
I will be potentially a doctor on February 10th.
Doctor? I don't feel well, really.
Physical, who is?
I'm having my dissertation on Monday, so you'll see me after.
Congratulations.
Having done that, and I might be sleeping, doesn't know that.
October 10th, your defendant?
Good luck.
Three.
That's awesome.
I'm, I'm going to nail it, don't worry, I'm just going to be really tired.
But we're going to have to call you Dr. Ericetti, the rest of the.
Oh, jeez.